All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 16th Board Meeting for the Colonial School District. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that the Board met an executive session on March 6th to discuss CEA negotiations for approximately 20 minutes. The Board also met prior to this meeting to discuss the Personnel Report, Student-Employee Discipline Matters, Special Education Agreements, and Transportation. The meeting lasted 30 minutes. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Trudeau. I'd like to welcome Coach Doherty to the podium to recognize our Plymouth White Marsh Girls Basketball Team for yet another outstanding season as league champions and district qualifiers. Coach?
Dr. Christian and members of the school board, thank you for taking the time tonight to recognize the 2022-2023 Whitemarsh Girls. There were many questions heading into this season, coming off of last year's PGA Division team. Lost three of our starters and four of our top six players to graduation. But from the opening weekend, winning games over powerhouse programs like Burke Catholic and Stone Catholic, this team let it be known that we were ready to continue to dominance. PW Girls Basketball has come through. Over the course of the regular season, the team achieved a 22 overall record, including the 101 mark in the SOL Liberty Division, earning the program's fourth straight outright Liberty Division title, our sixth. The team then went on to win second consecutive SOL Tournament Championship, three straight thrilling come-from-behind wins over Council Rock South, Abington, Stotterson, Class II, ending overtime. For the first program, boys or girls, repeat as SOL Tournament Champion, Harvard and Penn. Sadly, our season came to an end in district playoffs, attempting to beat our rivals over Dublin at Abington, third time, never an easy task trying to beat them. We finished with an overall record of 23 and 12 of the 23 wins coming over teams who qualified for the state title, showing why, despite the early exit from the playoffs, the team has continued to stay ranked as the top. Twenty-three wins elevated this year's senior class to a remarkable 100-win over the past four years, with seniors Erin Daly, Abby Sharp playing a part in all of them. Their four-year record of 100 wins against just 10 losses, 91% winning, best in our school's history for any program. Think they missed out on about 15 or so wins during the COVID. The team was much more than just the seniors, though. We got invaluable contributions from ninth graders A.J. Avery, one of the team's leading scorers, freshman McKenna Winland, a game-clutch free throws, thrilling game-winning shot by Council Rock South. Sophomore Quinn Daly and junior Haley O'Hara played invaluable roles, starting several games, helping the program transition to identity. There were several individual accomplishments to recognize in this year as well. Senior Angelina Bowser, named second-team All-League, has committed to her soccer and basketball career just down the road at Chestnut Hill College. Senior Azariah Crumpton was named the University's Feature Athlete of the Week this week for everything she does for us on the court and off the court. Senior Erin Daly was named first-team All-League. Next month, Daly will be named All-State, named the 12th member for our 1,000-point career point club on January 24th, in which she reached a milestone in the most thrilling of fashions, hit the game-winning shot at Abington for the league. Senior Abby Sharp was named first-team All-League. Erin on Daly next time will be named. She became the 11th member of our 1,000-point club on January 12th, became just the fifth player in our program's history over 500. Earlier this year, became our first-ever. Abby will be continuing her career at the University of Pennsylvania. I'd now like to introduce all the members of the team. Girls, as I say your name, come forward. Ninth graders were Alyssa Avery, Gosselin Perez, McKenna Winland. Our sophomores were Quinn Daly and Taylor Williams. Our lone junior was Haley O'Hara. Our four seniors were Anthony Bowser, Azariah Crumpton, Erin Daly, Abby Sharp, and our season coaches TJ and Lucian, Mike Donami, our hosts of Florida Media, and Brendan Watson. Just want to say thank you again for taking the time, just to say thank you again, not just for your support here at the meeting, but we see you at our games, we appreciate your in-person support with the bright future this team has. We look forward to being back here again very soon, celebrate more change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
It was a super fun season. We had a lot of fun coming out and watching you girls play, so looking forward to next year. Now, moving on, this is a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented in items 4B through 4F, which includes Board Business Meeting 2/23/23, FMT Committee Meeting 3/6/23, Finance Committee Meeting 3/6/23, HR Committee Meeting 3/6/23, and Curriculum Committee Meeting 3/13/23. May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? This is a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for February 2023. May I have a second? Sue? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Treasurer's Report. This is a motion to approve the February 2023 Treasurer's Report. May I have a second? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? At this time, are there any public comments on any of the items that are on tonight's agenda? Okay. No public comments? Then I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you again. March is Music in Our Schools Month. I believe Mrs. O'Connor and several of our students are here today, and they look like they're ready to present.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy Music in Our Schools Month. First and foremost, thank you, Board, for allowing us to show something that we love so much to be featured at tonight's meeting, and thank you for supporting us throughout all these years. My name is Hannah Lowenstein, and I'm a senior at PW, and I'm also the newly-appointed co-president of the PWHS newly reinstated Tri-M National Music Honor Society, Chapter 6779.
And my name is James Knapp, and I am also a PW senior and co-president with Hannah. Many of us here tonight are members of Tri-M, and we hope to see our efforts of supporting our community through music come to fruition. When applying for membership, we were asked why music matters to us. The overarching answer seemed to be that being a part of the Colonial School District music program has helped us shape our identities and find our voices in our friends. It is something I am proud to be a part of.
It's true. With teachers building our confidence and having us onstage since kindergarten, it sets a solid platform to want to share our music with others. It also builds the confidence to stand in front of the school board and give a speech. I proudly can, I can proudly say that because of being in the School District's music program, I am a better person. Before we begin, we would like to give thanks to those teachers. Mrs. Langus, Mrs. O'Shea, Mrs. Oh, Ms. Walls, Ms. Kaplan, Mr. Wilson, Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Venkus, Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Kaufman, and Mrs. O'Connor for being those people to help us find our place.
We have a few brief performances lined up for you this evening. First, we will hear from the PW Chamber Strings and Wire Choir, who will play an Irish reel featured in the movie Titanic, and an arrangement of the song from Grammy's Album of the Year, "As It Was," by Harry Styles. And after, we will hear a performance from the PW Clarinet Crew and a district reveal of the new PW music logo.
instrumentalists: Andrew Walters, Sophia Summers, and David Epstein for making the PMEA District Orchestra and Band this year, along with Sakar Palowski, who made the district choir. And so did Tilly McLaughlin. Thank you for your time, and we hope you enjoyed our performance tonight. Thanks to an idea spearheaded by band director Tonya Kaufman, we present the new PW music logo. Drum roll, please.
Yes. Right, everybody? Do this? There we go.
So, on behalf of the entire department, I would like to thank the entire Board, all the administration, for all of your support for these kids. If you enjoyed what you heard tonight, we have some amazing concerts happening in our community over the next two months between all of our buildings in the district, and we hope to see you all out there. Thank you again.
Thank you all so much for coming. Before the students leave, I know that our students, our students that are performing in our various ensembles and choir and band, do an outstanding job in the classroom. I know that. Your principals tell me that. I see the grades the students earn. We spend a lot of time every spring preparing for the PSSAs, right? Which is a standardized test. But there is nothing, in my opinion, that is more important than performance assessment. And what we saw tonight was true performance. There is so much value in what you did tonight, performing in public, speaking in public, and just excelling at every level, in the classroom and in the arts. And we are very appreciative and supportive of your efforts. Thank you.
The new logo looks fabulous. That looks great. It's...
So, we will be performing at the Capitol, the State Capitol, on Monday, too.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Item nine, 9A and 9B, is the approval of the Superintendent's Report and Personnel Report. Motion to approve the Personnel Report and Extracurricular Contracts is outlined in 9B and 9C. Board action is requested on the, for the recommended personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second? Gail? Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor? Thank you. And now I will turn it over to our student representatives, Bella and Olivia.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members, and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report. White Marsh Elementary School recently kicked off its first-ever One-School-One-Book program with the book, "A Boy Called Bat." Every family, teacher, and staff member received a copy of the book to read over the course of a single month. A special website was also created, which includes video-recorded read-alouds by White Marsh teachers. Each night, a new chapter is released with a new special guest reader, so all of our families can follow along at home. The program officially began on March 3rd with a kickoff celebration, where special guests from within the school district community came to White Marsh and read the first few chapters to our students. This initiative has definitely created a shared reading experience within our entire elementary school community.
Through the month of February, Ridge Park held its annual Food Drive Initiative. Students brought in food and personal care items for the Colonial Neighborhood Council. During the week of February 20th, we completed our second No Place for Hate project by participating in the Unity Walk, carrying positive message, messages, reading "I Walk with Vanessa," and grade-level activities. The annual spaghetti dinner is back after a hiatus due to COVID. On February 15th, students and families were served their spaghetti dinner as by Ridge Park staff members. Students raised over $4,500 for the Ronald McDonald House while doing lots of reading.
Plymouth Elementary staff and students celebrated Read Across America from February 27th through March 2nd, 2023. Staff and students participated in activities and theme days to illustrate how fun reading can be. An example of a theme was "Books Bring Us Together" and students dressed as community members. On March 21st, 2023, students and staff will participate in a Rock Your Socks Day in honor of World Down Syndrome Day. Throughout the week, teachers will share read-alouds with their students, so they can learn about friends with Down Syndrome and what makes them unique.
During the first week of March, Conja Hocken Elementary celebrated Read Across America, where we focused on celebrating books in our community. Throughout the week, we had fun activities with our students to promote reading, including mystery readers within the classrooms and walking trips into our community. In addition, there was district activities to participate in, too, a bookmark contest and a photograph contest. During the week of March 13th, Conja Hocken will begin to introduce disability and inclusion awareness. On March 21st, Conja Hocken students will learn about and support Down Syndrome Day with Mix-Mash Rock Your Socks Day to signify the uniqueness of people with Down Syndrome. Students learn that this is supported in March, the third month of the year, to signify the uniqueness of the triplication of the 21st chromosome, which causes Down Syndrome.
At the end of February, Ms. Carbo and Mr. Brim facilitated a Human Growth and Development Parent Preview at CES as an introduction to the curriculum. CES participated in its Unity Walk on February 27th. The Barron Hill Fire Department also came to CES to take an aerial photograph of the students and staff forming the letters CES, thank you to the fire department. CES held a fun assembly to conclude Black History Month, as the hip-hop fundamentals focused on students' involvement in the American Civil Rights Movement with dance and other fun activities. CES students and staff celebrated Read Across America the week of February 27th with many activities like dressing in PJs and participating in a bookmark challenge. In the band, students are preparing for their upcoming spring concert on April 19th. We hope to see you all there.
On March 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th, CMS presented Mary Poppins Jr. to sold-out enthusiastic audiences. It has been one year since the entire CMS family paraded over to our beautiful, brand-new building. The students and staff loved the open, bright rooms and have acclimated to our new environment. We are all very thankful and so appreciative to the school board and to Dr. Christian for making this possible. Two Colonial Middle School Odyssey of the Mind teams and one Plymouth White Marsh High School team presented their competition submissions at the Southeast PA Regional Competition, held on Saturday, March 4th, at DeSalle's University.
PW sent many students to the 2023 Pennsylvania DECA competition in Hershey at the end of February. The National Art Honor Society recently inducted 29 students. Plymouth White Marsh art students also placed in the 2023 Shifting Spaces Student Art Contest High School Division, creating posters addressing the theme "What Is Love?" Congratulations to the Boys Basketball Team winning the district championship. Another congratulation to our PW cheerleaders placing third in the country at the Universal Cheerleaders Association National Championships in Orlando. We have just started spring sports at PW, and the seniors are looking forward to their Disney trip as they depart in one week. This is the conclusion of our March 16th, 2023 student report. Thank you all for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you guys so much. All right. Now, on to new business. Sue?
Board policy revisions on a first-read basis. This is a motion to approve the policy revisions as presented and outlined below. Policy 338, Sabbatical Leave. This policy has a new title number and language to conform to PSBA's standard format. It was formerly Policy 438, Leave of Absence, Sabbatical Leave for Restoration of Health. Also, on a first-read, Policy 707, Use of District Facilities and Equipment, and Policy 251, Homeless Students. And all of those are motion for a first-read approval.
All right. May I have a second? Jamina? All right. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Sue?
This is a motion to approve the revision to Board Policy 304, Employment of District Staff as Presented on a Second-Read Basis, and this will be the final read and approval.
All right. May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Chris?
Sure. This is a motion to delete the board policies outlined below. These policies were reviewed at the March 13th CRSL Committee Meeting. Policy 251, Suicide Intervention. That language is now covered in Policy 819, Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response. And Policy 253, Homeless Children, to be replaced by Policy 251, Homeless Students, which we just approved for first read.
Great, may I have a second? Gail? Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Sue.
This is a motion to approve the non-bargaining unit rates as presented. And those are, can be seen if someone needs to, where they're not in this.
Oh, no, they, yeah, I think...
They're in board docs.
Yeah, it looks like they are in board docs.
I'm sorry, yes. And that's it, just to approve the increase in non-bargaining unit rates.
All right, may I have a second? Jamina? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Sue?
Motion to approve the addendum to the staffing agreement with GHR Education to provide substitute instructional aid coverage.
All right, may I have a second? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Next is a motion to approve the quote from Power School for the Add-on Service School Spring, so that all job postings from Power School Talent Ed will automatically post to School Spring.
May I have a second? Rick? All in favor, or questions or comments, sorry? All right, all in favor? Great. One more from Sue.
This is a motion to approve the professional negotiations agreement reached between the Colonial Education Association and the Colonial Board of School Directors effective August 16th, 2024, through August 15th, 2028. This is a, the contract still, the current contract still has a year to go. This is a four-year extension to that contract. And it's a motion to approve it.
May I have a second? Gail? Any questions or comments?
I, well, let's vote on it first.
Okay, good. Everybody ready? We'll vote. Oh, all in favor? Sorry.
I just said it passes six.
Okay. So that passed six-zero? And Sue?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the leadership of the Colonial Education Association. It was, in all my years doing this, the most pleasant and respectful negotiation we've had. It was, it was just kind of seamless, and I just really appreciate the efforts made by the executive board of the Colonial Education Association. And I think this is a great thing for the families, students, and community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Jamina?
This is a motion to approve the 2023 summer programs. Summer Literacy Blast, Summer Academy, enrichment camps, Title I summer programs, and extended school year.
May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Next, we have a motion to approve the Flexible Instruction Day Program for the 2023-2024 school year. This program was reviewed and discussed at the Curriculum Committee Meeting on February 13th, 2023.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Jamina?
Next, we have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Emergency Instructional Schedule for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. This schedule is reviewed and discussed at the Curriculum Committee Meeting on February 13th, 2023.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
And we have a motion to approve the conference requests that are outlined below. These requests will be viewed at the Curriculum Committee Meeting on March 13th, 2023, and they include a college counselor to attend the Such Counselor Tour from April 23rd to the 26th, and the EDI teacher to attend the Gen Cyber Conference at the University of Pittsburgh from June 19th through the 23rd, also 2023.
May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the 2023-2024 CMTHS operating budget as presented.
May I have a second, please? Sue? Any questions or comments?
Would you mind, Mr. Sobelski, would you mind highlighting, this budget is going to be a significant increase to our bottom-line item, but that's mostly because of we have an increased enrollment of students participating in class, or in the CMTHS, is that correct?
Excuse me, that's correct. It's a very popular program over there. A lot of our students are participating, and based on our participation, we have to pay our fair share. And it's going to very good programs, and it does mean a significant amount to our budget, but our kids are receiving the benefit of a top-notch education.
All in favor? Thank you. And Rick?
Motion to approve the proposed Colonial School District Property Tax Rent Rebate Program to provide a 75% match of the Pennsylvania Tax Rebate Program effective for property taxes or rent paid in 2022. This program will provide a rebate to qualifying participants after July 1st, 2023.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments?
Sorry, do you mind highlighting how the people who are eligible for this can participate?
Yes, our program piggybacks off the state rent rebate property tax program. So if anybody within the three municipalities that we service qualifies for the state program, they would automatically qualify for our program. They do have to submit the same tax form, which is a PA 1,000, to our business office, and we will match 75% of what the state gives them at the base amount. Good news for our local seniors is that Governor Shapiro has announced that he's expanding this program at the state level, which will then expand our program as well.
Great.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. Jamina?
Motion to approve two placements in lieu of faith due to student confidentiality. These agreements were discussed in executive session.
All right, may I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve the renewal of the Legal Services Consultation Agreement with Sweet Stevens Katz &amp; Williams LLP for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $8,000.
May I have a second? Jamina? Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the Educational Services Contract with Solient to provide four registered behavioral technicians at a rate of $65 per hour and $97.50 per hour for overtime hours.
May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And Rick?
Motion to appoint Mark Digian as the Board Treasurer effective April 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
All right, may I have a second? Sue? Any questions or comments?
I would just like to take this opportunity to welcome Mark. As of April 1st, I'm not welcoming you until then, Mark. And congratulations, and looking forward to working with you. And I would also like to take this opportunity, after five years, to thank Dave Sobelski for all that he has done for Colonial School District. It's been great working with you, and we've very much appreciated your financial wisdom and guidance, so thank you.
A great opportunity servicing the Colonial School District and the communities, and can't believe how fast five years goes. But it's been a pleasure working with the board, top-notch administrative team, the professional staff. And I know I'm not a teacher, but I take a lot of pride in the kids, and it was really nice to have a send-off like that tonight, so thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations. I hope you'll come back and visit us, and I think Dr. Christian is leaving you on the snow day list. So you're not going to be too far away from us. All right, all in favor? Thank you. All right, is there a solicitor's report this evening?
There is not.
Committee reports. Chris?
Thank you. For the CRSL meeting that we just had this past Monday, we received a very informative overview of what is Chapter 339, and it is the School Counseling Plan. Pennsylvania requires all school districts to develop a comprehensive K-12 school counseling plan aligned to the Career Education Work Standards. It focuses on career awareness and preparation, career acquisition, career retention and advancement, and interpretorship. So, and it covers, in the elementary school, our plan covers identifying interests, and the middle school is exploring interests, and the high school is actually developing the actual plan. So we talked about that, and like I said, that was very informative. And we also had a discussion about calming spaces in some of our buildings for students who experience anxiety, and they'll be, where they can take a short break in a quiet space to decompress and then return to their classes. This was just a discussion. We, Mrs. Burke and her team are working through some of the details, and we hope to be presenting this at a future board meeting.
All right, thank you. Curriculum. Jamina?
Yes. The Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting was held on March 13th, 2023. Mrs. Wilczak, did I pronounce that correctly? Willicheck, thank you. Mrs. Willicheck highlighted the Art Department's 2023 District Art Show. The title this year is The Art of Belonging, featuring artwork from students in K-12. Opening night is Wednesday, March 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Colonial Middle School. She also provided an overview of federal programs and our title programs in the district, specifically hiding our title, highlighting our Title I programs at both Conshohocken Elementary School and Plymouth Elementary School. Teachers from Conshohocken and Plymouth Elementary also shared with the board their experiences and takeaways from the Title I Improving School Performance Conference that was held in Pittsburgh, PA, from January 29th through February 1st. Mr. Merg shared updates for the planning of the future virtual programming at Plymouth- White Marsh High School. And the committee reviewed two conference requests that are being presented tonight for approval. The first conference request was the one we approved for Ms. Ricker to attend Gen Cyber at Pitt, at the University of Pittsburgh, and the second conference request we already approved for Ms. Lynch to attend the Such Counselor Tour in Sabatoga Springs.
All right, thank you. Will, facilities?
I have no report at this time.
Rick, finance?
Finance committee met on Monday, March 6th. Committee reviewed the 2022-2023 budget year-to-date. Revenues are slightly lower than budget, while maintenance and special education projects are, sorry, maintenance and special education costs are trending over-projection. Special education is mostly due to increased enrollment. Overall, the current budget is still comparable to the previous year. Next, the committee took a look, second look, and reviewed the 23-24 budget. Educational costs will be rising due to projected increase in enrollment, requiring additional staff, and the significant increase in the CMTHS contribution due to a higher percentage of students attending. Current budget look would have a deficit requiring a 3.25% tax increase to fund all of it, but will be reviewed again next month as we get third looks from healthcare and other items. We also reviewed the items that we then voted on in the previous section.
Thank you. Sue, HR?
No report.
Thank you. Chris, the tech school?
Yep. So I just wanted to mention that, sorry, a Y MCA pre-K program is on the way to be opening a new licensed pre-K center at Central Monaco Technical High School. The start date will be August 29th. It'll be serving ages three to five, and they have, right now, the costs are established at $2.75 per week, or free to qualifying families, which is really exciting. Space is limited, and if you have any questions, you can go to, excuse me, you can go to the CMTHS website. Also, the, the tech school had several students compete in Schools USA in the district competition, and I'm happy to say that they had six gold medalists, four silver medalists, and four bronze medalists. And also, those that are interested, their bistro restaurant is open in April, on the 18th, 19th, 26th, 27th, and 28th, and you can look at the website for further details. They serve a delicious breakfast and lunch, and reservations are required. And also, the bakery is open on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 8:15 to 9:45, and 12:15 to 1:20, 1:55. So that's my report.
All right, thank you so much. Does anyone have an intermediate unit report? I know Sharon is away. Okay, legislative?
Governor proposed a new budget. Legislative committee met last night to review. While the budget is exciting, there's additional funding for schools, especially schools that were identified as being negligent in the court hearing that just overturned, or that the court hearing about educational funding, but it still only keeps place with inflation. It's not going to limit the gap. Fortunately, a district such as ours, we're very fortunate, but some of the less funded schools are still have a giant gap in their budgets.
Thank you. Municipal, community liaisons? Any reports? Okay, Gail, the foundation?
So just a reminder that May 7th is Foundation Day, so come out and join. It'll be lots of fun. Bring the kitties out. It'll be fun.
Okay, and then just so everyone is aware, in board docs, for your information, there are activities accounts, athletic accounts, building reports, curriculum reports, and technology reports. And now, is there any public comment this evening? Please come on up and state your name and place of residence.
Yeah, Robert Trans, Wildflower Drive, Plymouth meeting. It's going to prove that actually some people read this when we get it in the mail. And I'm used to seeing very good results of Pennsylvania, of Plymouth-White Marsh versus the state. And we look at the English Language PSSA, very nice, very good, very positive. Math, very good, very positive. Science, very good, very positive. SAT scores, very nice. ACT scores, very nice. And then I look at the Keystone exams, and what happened in biology?
So in biology, we had a very small sample. We're certainly happy to share with you the scores of the students who took the biology course the year before and the year prior to that, surrounding the pandemic. So it can be more explained when you look at the statistics around it. We're not going to hide our data. That is the data for the students who took the course, and we're providing help for those students so that they're proficient in biology. But our scores and the surrounding years around that are very strong, similar to our English and math, and Mrs. Gregitis and her team are happy to go over that with you.
Well, I was just curious, because science was good, and biology is part of science.
Sure. And if you look at previous years, you'll...
I was hoping it wasn't because you're using Florida biology for approved textbooks.
I'm not going to comment on that. But I can tell you, if you look at our historical data, it's strong, and, but that was certainly an area that caught our eye, but our scores are our scores, and we're going to tell the truth.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, and it looks like you have a plan in place to address that particular issue. And that's really what I'm looking to see, that you have paid close attention to that. You saw that's a problem area, and you'll work to solve that problem area in the future. And that's what is very important for the students.
Absolutely.
And the last question, it was nice seeing all the band members here and that. Do they own the instruments, or does Plymouth-White Marsh own the instruments, or is it a combination?
It's a combination. So we have a leasing program through the, for the smaller instruments, but when you see the orchestra, which has, you know, when they fill the stage, we purchase the big instruments, because it's really hard to bring the big drum to school every day and the bassoon. So we make sure we have multiple kids down through the middle school that are interested in those instruments. So we buy the large ones, concert pianos, things like that, and the students lease the smaller ones.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Colonial School Board members and administrators. We are Beth Miller and Stephanie Brennan-Miloszky. We're co-Vice Presidents of the Colonial Education Association, and we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of our CEA President, Jill Forrester, the CEA bargaining team, including Jim Muscarella, and on behalf of all the teachers of the Colonial Education Association and Colonial School District. Jill was sorry she's unable to be here this evening. Her daughter is competing in the PIAAA swim, state swimming championship. They made it to the finals, so that's good news. But as a bargaining team, we wanted to take a moment to say that we're grateful for the respectful and collaborative negotiation process that led us to this new contract. We too appreciate having a school board who recognizes the value of teachers in Colonial School District, and we look forward to continuing this positive relationship with you moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, is there any?
I'm Monica Salvia, resident of Plymouth Meeting with three children in the Montreux School, as I say most of the time I come up, so thank you for having me. I want to thank the board first for updating policy, I think it's 3, 251, on homeless students, and wanted to just mention a couple things for the board's consideration in this process. I think that's a, it's a really good, comprehensive policy, much better than the, than the limited one before. But a couple things came to mind that I just wanted to share for consideration. So, one, I think we know that, of course, COVID laid bare a lot of the issues in terms of persistent inequality, in terms of access to broadband, to technology, and so I just want to make sure that part of the plan, and I think I saw this even in some other notes tonight, is to ensure that all students have equal access, and especially those in an unhoused population, because that will be that much more challenging for them, of course. Secondly, I think we're all aware that there will be, that there was a significant funding increase for homeless students and their families under the American Rescue Plan. That, of course, is going away. September 2024, I think, has to be spent out by January, and so I wanted to ask a question about what the district plans to do to fill in the gap. You know, those extra funds, I think, were really important. It looks like in identifying families and providing that trust factor when you have funds to give, I think that makes a big difference, and obviously gives that practical help that students need, very flexible in a lot of different ways. So, wanted to ask, you know, what's on, on the minds of the school and the board around how, the district and the board, around how that will be addressed going forward, because it'll be here sooner than we think. And then, third, I do have a suggestion for the board to consider around a specific policy on school discipline related to students who are experiencing homelessness. I did see that the group Schoolhouse Connection, which I know you guys have used for different reference points in training, has a national, has a recommended policy around this. And so, what I think is really great about it is that talks a lot about alternative approaches to discipline, which is really centered on trauma-focused care and restorative justice, all words that I've heard before for the district, and I know are front of mind, but just want to keep this as an idea, because I think we can all understand that students experiencing homelessness often, you know, are going to be more challenged around things like punctuality and attendance, and of course, making sure that policies are in place, not just flexibility, because I know the district is flexible and that we have wonderful, caring staff, but that they're assured that they will have a place and that we won't revert to sort of more difficult disciplinary actions, you know, bringing things like expulsion and suspension as a result of, you know, not showing up, not showing up in time. Not that that would typically be the path, but just in case, I think would be really important to address. Schools are the last line of defense often in these places, and so I just wanted to bring that to attention and share that I think that would be something important to look at. So, thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The board and district continue to support a full-time home and school visitor. Megan is outstanding, picked up right off where Alan left, knows our families, and then our principals really go to the greatest length to support our students who are experiencing challenges and their families that are experiencing challenges, not, not just with what we can do as a district, such as continuing our lunch program that was no longer funded by the state, breakfast is. So, kudos to Governor Wolf for continuing that, but Laurie McCoy and Megan are continuing it for our lunch program, because students need to be fed so that they can be comfortable and ready to learn. But I can tell you, there's a numerous number of things they do behind the scenes, too, to support families. Each of the buildings, our professional staff and our administrative staff, and I know the board fully supports that as well, and we will continue, and we're always open, we're not perfect, we're open to ideas, so sharing any suggestions you have is certainly welcome.
Sure. If it's okay, I'd like to share that suggested disciplinary model, so you could take a look at it.
Certainly, certainly.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate Megan. She is, my interactions with her have been fantastic. She's fabulous, so kudos to your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Do we have any board comments this evening?
Just, Mrs. O'Reilly, would you give a plug for our job fair that's coming up?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Christian. I just want to share with the community that we will be hosting a job fair next Tuesday, March 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., held at the Large Group Instruction Room at the Plymouth Meet, Plymouth White Marsh High School. We are seeking interested candidates for food services, security guard, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria recess aides, and instructional aides for both our regular school year and also our summer programs. Joining us at the job fair will also be First Student Substitute Teacher Service, General Healthcare Resources, and Building Blocks, and we hope that we will see you there if you're interested. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.